In the council chambers here at City Hall in Eblith, 5:30, July 17 of 2025. Call to order, please.
Councilor Rosie.
Here.
Councilor Coivin.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
Mayor Rome.
Here. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes, minutes for our city council meeting of June 16, 2025. Motion to accept.
So move.
Purpich.
Check it.
Purpich and Rosie, any discussion on those or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Motion to move?
So move.
Support Rosie and Willis. We have the additional piece, I think you guys all have it there regarding the car show. So we will add that in here as, whoops, 12? It will be in as number 12. Jackie, did you have anything else that needed to be?
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have anything they would need to be? Okay, with the addition of number 12. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time for public comment. If there's anybody that has anything that they'd like to say, feel free to step up. Once, twice, so. We will move on to appointments and presentations. Next up, it would be a reappointment of George Walters to the Eblith Economic Development Authority. Motion to move?
So move.
By Louis. Second?
Support.
Support by Coivin. Any discussion on that at all?
I'd just like to thank George for stepping up for another term and for all the years that he's put in serving the city on the EDA and the HTRAs, as a matter of fact.
Absolutely.
I was gonna say, Lillie, it's been a pleasure working with him on both of those commissions, and he is a true asset to the community. He really cares, and he does a good job.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, George, we appreciate you and your time, as well as your family allowing you to give up as much of your time as you do for our community. Next up is consent to the agenda approval of payroll from June 1 through the 15th of 25, and approval of claims for June of 2025. Motion to move.
So move.
Support.
Rosie, Coivin, any further discussion?
I will be abstaining from voting.
One abstaining. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's four with one abstaining, thank you. Motion carries. Let's pay our people. All right. Down into the new business. First up is considering quotes and accepting the, possibly the cheapest quote, I guess, for estimate from Iron Oaks fencing for the new dog park. Motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich. Second? Support. Support by Rosie. Discussion?
Do we have a footprint?
You say a footprint?
Yeah, a blueprint and a footprint of where this whole dog park is gonna be.
There's not a, anything that I have seen that Jerry has finished out outside of the conversation. This fencing here is to create the two entry points into it. He is utilizing old fencing to secure off the two points. So one point is just completely blocked off behind the ball field so that you can't get behind there. And then he is utilizing a set of gates that we currently had so that they can get lawn mowers and whatnot in there. So this fencing is for the very front of that, when you're looking from the road at it, to create two separate entry points, one entry point for small dogs, one entry point for the large dogs.
Well, that's fine, maybe later on in, when we go over the committee meetings, I'll ask another couple of questions, but
Yeah, absolutely.
It should be realized that we did get two estimates.
Yes.
And one was, you know, quite a bit less expensive.
And I guess that's why I said it the way I did, the least expensive in Iron Oaks, because there were two quotes, one was $4,000 cheaper for the same work. And I did talk with Jerry briefly about it, just to make sure that, you know, this is the same project, and he understood that they are quoting the same thing, so in the long run.
But the only thing I saw different than the quotes is that they were using a different schedule of piping for the posts and stuff, but I didn't think that that was really anything to worry about as far as.
For what we're working on, it didn't even come up in conversation with Jerry, so. Mark, do you know if Jerry mentioned anything of that to you at all?
Pardon?
Did Mark, excuse me, did Jerry mention anything to you at all about the different product being used there?
He did not.
He did not, okay.
No. But I was just kinda looking at this and, you know, that quote came out of $10,000, but it, it's an additional $2,470, though, that I don't think is added on there, right, for the?
If, if.
For the optional.
If you wanted it done correct, so I did misspeak, so thank you for pointing that out. So it's about roughly $2,000 cheaper for exact work. The quote that we were given from Keller showed the extra work, and that's actually where the most amount of money difference was, was in the additional possible work. I didn't know much about Iron Oaks, I asked Jerry, and he said he verified with them that if and when we need more work done, that they, something that they are willing to look at as well, they're not just.
I had the opportunity to work with Iron Oaks when I put up the fencing down on the main street, and
Okay.
Ed's a nice guy. You just have to make sure that when he subcontracted out, that the subcontractor's good, because at the time, he didn't, his subcontractor wasn't that good. But me and Ed hashed it out and worked it out, but he's a very nice guy, he's been there for a long time.
Any further discussion on this at all? So any, all in favor of accepting the cheaper of the two quotes through Iron Oaks for the dog park fencing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up is the preliminary cost estimate for the parking lot improvements at the community old school location, it's called that, for an old former school site. Motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich, second? Support. Support by Willis. Discussion on that? So myself, Mr. Purpich, and Alan went to the site and discussed a little more into detail with lots of fingers pointing, et cetera, of what we would like to see opposed to, just on paper, what seems to make sense. And I feel like between the three of us, three different ideas came together and made one pretty solid idea of what will work well for us. I also brought Jerry to the site prior to get his opinion on it for snow removal and things like that, and he gave two different options on what would be beneficial to him. So in essence, we utilized one of those to help him with removing snow as far as getting a three-quarter ton truck in there with a bee plower or what have you to remove snow instead of worrying about front end loaders and all that stuff on the routine. So I guess four people's opinions got put into this one, and even though that this cost is more than what the original amount was, when we were talking about putting it on the north side of the building, this, I think, is a little bit more in range of what we're looking for for a parking lot, and it is what the cost of the parking lot would be for what we're looking for. Was Alan 30 or 35 did you end up getting there?
So this is a 30-car parking lot.
And I assume that is adjacent to Fayle Avenue?
Correct, yep. The entry point will be just north of the two mature trees that we have on the lot, so it won't disrupt the current fire hydrant that's there, saving us money there. And obviously, there's not a whole lot of mature trees on the south side of that school, so it allows us to keep all those trees that are right there as well for the time being. It'll tie right into the current handicap ramp that is going up to the school, old school site, and it'll tie into also the steps that are right there as well. So we'll be able to put handicap spots near the ramp portion, and like you said, total of 30 other spots, kinda doing like a loop through there with angle parking. Are there any other questions or anything that myself or Mr. Purpich could try to answer on?
And that's primarily just to service the building that remains on the former school property?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah. It's not gonna serve a secondary purpose for any building that might go near there, or?
No, no, as far as in our ideas of when, this was, this would be to supplement any kind of business and/or and things going on at the building itself, nothing else but
Community use, et cetera.
Community use.
I would probably think that if, a little bit farther up, if we had like another Lincoln Place, that would be bidding just like the one down there, or up here, we'd have their own parking lot put in with it.
Yeah, would be on probably.
So then that would be for them, yeah.
Yeah.
I was up there looking around, and I was thinking that's what they'd have to do.
Well, the nice thing too about the lot, the way it's laid out right now, is where the old mechanics schooling used to be, what have you, that was taken down. That lot there has been used as a parking lot now for a couple of years with gravel in there, so there's no sense for us to do anything to that right now until we know what more we want to do with the whole lot. So we can continue to use that gravel lot as well, if there's seriously a need for it. But for most routine things, and I did speak with the school, we can get in all that later, but them coming up there for adult community, yet volleyball, pickleball, things like that, it's just, there's not gonna be much more of a desire, need for more than 30. And we did talk about when we were up there that we would put a solid curb going the direction of south, because that would be the direction that we would expand if we ever needed to, so there would be no sense putting a curb in there for us to have to blast out if we ever did need to make it bigger for any reason at all. For what we foresee in the future of that building, more than 30 spots, I mean, I think we'd be thinking of something drastically different than what we've discussed. And then like Mr. Purpich had even mentioned, if there's ever a large event that's going on there for a night or a weekend, there's street park, off-street park, or street parking there as well and everything else, so it's not like we're limited just to 30 spots. And then if you haven't been up to the, there lately, they are working on the tennis court and pickleball court, but we do have that parking lot that comes off Elba that I think a lot of people are gonna utilize that more so for
The pickleball and tennis.
For those things than they are the actual parking lot itself, so. Any further discussion on that that we can try to answer questions on?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of moving on with Bolton and Manks' cost estimate for the parking lot, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. And for the people at home, not looking to hide anything, that prop that is looking at roughly $345,000 is an estimate, and that is part of the ITRB money that we received to do the infrastructure on that property, so. People are wondering what it is or what we're doing with it, that's exactly what we're doing. Okay, the number three, NTS cost estimate for the geotechnical investigation for the parking lot improvements at former school site. Motion to move?
So move.
By Rosie. Second?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Alan, you wanna explain to us what, what you're playing with up there, what you're up to?
Yeah, so part of this parking lot probably sitting over what used to be part of that building, foundation, stuff, how did it get filled, how did it get compacted? Is it suitable? We're putting roughly about $345,000 into it, so we don't want it to saddle or sink or have issues five years, 10 years from now, we wanna get the maximum life out of it, so. These soil orders will help determine that we got suitable fill underneath there, that we don't have to do any corrective work to it, just kind of insurance that we're good to build on top of it. It's kind of what we've been told, but this is kinda like that second check that everything's good underneath that parking lot or.
Well, we certainly want it to last.
Yeah, if you spend that kind of money, you hate to find half of it falling into the old school site, understand?
It's understandable. And assuming this cost is already built into your estimate?
Yes, some of it is, yes.
I was trying to be funny, but I guess, I'm glad to hear that.
I had to look twice, too.
So with the, this, this question, is this something in that we're gonna have to do in every location, whether it could possibly, where the Franklin was, et cetera?
Depends what's built on there, for just creating screen space for the park, probably not if you can put like another link in place, if there's that comment you'd likely determine, or it's gonna be, probably yes. Put so much money into a spot here, you wanna still check what soils that's being built on top of and whatnot. So yes, part of, there'd probably be other spots coming up that some other geotech work would be needed for in the future.
So from my understanding, and I only know what I know from asking some questions randomly, but wasn't it asked of the school to put the correct mixture of whatever we want to soil or rock or whatever into there to make all these sites buildable? And do we know for sure that they did it, or is this really because we're questioning if they did it?
Yeah, I think it's more of our independent check that it's suitable for us to build on.
Because they made the comment at the time that there was two types, they could fill it up, the good stuff for the not-so-good stuff.
Yes.
So we don't know what they put in there.
From $2?
We're gonna find out.
Well, yeah, it was, it was not the greatest conversation we had, and that's how it came out, so. I'm not a land management guy, so I'd have no idea what they put in there.
There's no telling how that money was spent to fill that up.
Yeah, Jerry was under the understanding that the property at Lincoln Place, which would be a possible Lincoln Place, that was the wrong way to say that, I'm sorry, possible apartment complex that he believed that that land was compacted the way exactly it needed to be in order to move forward, but he also said that that's just what he was given for information. Safe to assume, but better to get the answers, I guess, on that.
Remember what they say about assuming.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
No doubt. Any further discussion or any questions for Alan about that at all? All in favor of that geotechnical investigation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up is the discussion for the fire consolidation with Fayle Township in the city of Gilbert. Motion to move on this topic.
So move.
Purpich, second?
I'll support.
Second by Coivin. Okay, discussion is on the table. Just to lay it out there, myself, Mr. Tamra with Fayle, and Mayor Overstar in Gilbert sat down briefly a few weeks ago and just discussed the idea of opening the idea of creating one fire district. The goal in that conversation was never to talk about colors, was never to talk about building or locations, et cetera. It is just about the fire district aspect to try and help with financing, to help these three communities continue forward to the best of their ability. The rest of that stuff that I just mentioned, obviously will come up in conversation down the road, but we need to concentrate on what the more important aspect is right now, and that's creating the funding and the fire district number, et cetera. I also think, and after chatting a little bit more with Jackie about it too, that later communication might include the EMT service as well into this and create a possible way of creating the funding that is required and needed for the work that we're doing in our communities. But I just want it to be known that by voting yes, you're not voting that you want to do anything more, then start the discussions over again with Fayle and Gilbert. Small groups started, each city would bring a small group to the table. We talked about it being the leader of that community, or the mayor, however one of the word. Fayle gets me all mixed up because they got their title different, but nonetheless, the three of us with one other person from your council, and then start the conversations from there. And I did ask if this was to go through on our end, if Mr. Rosie would like to join me as a liaison for the city of Eblith. So with that being said, is there any other questions, concerns? Joe?
I, I was involved with the first conversations, and you know, back then I said it, it's gotta be done eventually. You know, and I think if we have the right people doing the talking, I think it can go the right way, because you have to realize the state will give us funding, they won't give us three separate fundings. If we all combined, we'll get something really nice, and it's gonna benefit the communities. You know, we were going in the right direction last time, but we had got some conflict from certain areas that they weren't even involved in the meetings. So all I can say is I hope that doesn't happen again. I think this, we're looking into the future, and it'd be best for the people, it'd be best for the, for the fire stuff, and EMTs. So I mean, it's something that's gotta be done, so that's how I feel about it.
My thoughts kinda run along the same lines, I participated for several months in the affirmative process, only to have it shut down overnight, seemingly, because of a small minority of personalities, if you will. But I guess, you know, what I may have learned from that experience and from speaking with our fire chief at another function, I think, hopefully when we kick this off, or at least one of your first meetings, that all of the figureheads that are at the table can come to terms with the thought that we as a council, or the Fayle Town Board, whatever it may be, hopefully we can get in a position where the council and the, or the councils and the town board are actually gonna say, this is what we want to do, and then assign the people to make it happen. You know, instead of letting the committee run the show, we wanna, I would just as soon be in a position where the governing bodies are going to have the ultimate say in what we wanna see happen. So with that, I coherently support the endeavor for the reasons that Councilor Coivin mentioned, that, you know, this is, this is something we look to the future for all of our agencies, and bottom line for me is, you know, what kind of, what level of service we can provide to our community at what extent. And, you know, there are a lot of other positives, but for me, that's the bottom line. It's, you know, it's, it's something that I've wanted to see for a long time, the fire district, and, you know, any, any sharing of municipal services that we can do as we go forward. I think it's a benefit to everybody involved, so that's where my head's at, Mayor.
I certainly would like to see a spirit of cooperation between all three parties. Like Councilor Lewis said, there's future projects besides the fire department and police departments that going forward that could benefit all three communities. Wastewater, just getting water in general, wells and stuff, and there's, there's different things that three communities can do a lot better than one, and not put a burden on, on any one community, but all three trying to get the best possible solution for all our problems, whether it's fire, police, anything else that goes on. I think that there has to be a little bit of spirit of cooperation around here. The towns are not, and the townships are not built to take on anything on their own anymore. There's just not that much money available. So by combining and help, hopefully, getting everybody on the same page will, will get us what we need and what, what the communities need, so. I'm, I'm for, I'm for it, I hope we can get some committees going. Get some talks going. Well, I'll try to sum up as best I can without being too wordy. I too invested a lot of time in it first, for, and I understand all the problems, and I think that I learned something from that, and I'm in agreement with the general thought, is that we do this one step at a time. What do we have to do first? We have to agree to look into it, that's the first step, that's what we're doing now. What's the next step? The next step is to have a meeting to decide what the next step should be. Does it perform the committees, blah, 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 but that's on the line. We can't get too far ahead of ourselves, how we, well, when we come to that bridge, we'll go across it and work it out. You know, that type of deal, so let's just take it one step at a time. The need is great, I haven't had anybody come up to me with a, with a con or something against it, you know, or why it should, why it's bad, I haven't heard any of that. And if there is out there, please let us know so we can deal with it, maybe there's a way around it, or maybe we can, you know, get the earth clear as to far what is going on and what isn't. But right now, we're at the first step, and we're just agreeing to look into it. A lot of work has been done before that can be pulled up and stuff like that. The timeframe isn't gonna be, you know, eons, it's not like when you first start. So there's, it's gonna be a shorter version of getting things going. But right now also, gentlemen, you have to realize that nothing is really broken. These three fire departments are fantastic, fire departments doing great work, no problems and everything like that, so. Right now, just to say we're gonna look into the distance, we don't, there's gonna be no changes, no nothing, just one step at a time. But nothing's broke, but it can be better financially, and maybe manpower, you don't know. There'll be no decreasing in manpower, I'm not, actually, can't be giving those guys. Anyway, I told you I wouldn't be too wordy, but I was anyway, so. I'm all for it, and I accept if you guys want me to sit in for the mayor whenever I suppose I can do that. Might need some help somewhere down the line on some other projects I got.
Shovel your driveway or what?
A little bit. No, that's Joe's job, I got Joe for that, oh boy. Anyway, yeah, all for it, look into it one step at a time, so.
Chief, you're here with us, they want you to take the microphone if you want for a second, we're willing to hear your, your point of view.
Well, my point of view is pretty much what it was before, is that something that we need to pursue financially. As far as, my point of view is, you guys, as a council, as city administrators, need to figure out your guys' end of it. Us, Gilbert, Fayle, we all work together, we all work together well, that part of it's gonna be easy. It's just minor things that would have to be figured out. But as far as the communities, that you guys gotta figure this out, put on your end. Once you guys tell us that that's what we're doing, and that's what we're doing, and I'm all for it.
Wonderful, thank you, appreciate you being here today, too, thank you. I took the phone call from Mayor Overstar on this topic with the hopes that he wanted to hear me say we should discuss this in 2026, when maybe we didn't have so much going on. But the importance behind it definitely puts it front row and center, along with a lot of other things that we have, but it was something that I wanted to tackle coming in after being elected, so no time like the present. no time like the present. I think anytime I've gone to any fire, I see an Evlith truck, I see a Gilbert truck, and I see a Fayle truck, and I see amazing men and women saving lives and saving buildings and taking care of people. So it's our job as the community leaders to put together the best plan we can to provide them with everything that they need to do the best job they can. If I put my hand out, or if somebody in my family puts their hand out for help in a fire, I'm not worried about what city person's on the other end of that. I'm not gonna take whatever hand is pulling me out of that fire, so I'm not concerned one way or the other, and if it means hurting some feelings along the way, because somebody gets upset about something small, then that's just the way it goes. But for the ultimate good of all three communities and for every citizen within these communities, I think it's the right thing to do. So remember, your yay vote is for nothing more than allowing us to start the discussion with City of Fayle and Gilbert again. We're not actually confirming a new fire district by any means. So with that being said, is there anything else anybody would like to discuss or bring up on this? No? Perfect. All in favor of continuing, or starting the discussion again with the fire consolidation with Fayle and Gilbert? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you. Next up is introduction and the first reading of the ordinance regulating antennas and towers. Motion to move?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any discussion?
Having read most of this, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands one of the reasons why we went ahead with this ordinance, because we've been approached by different entities to have antennas put throughout the city of Evlith. Then, of course, there's a spot for every one of them, and we didn't have any ordinances in place, correct? So we're gonna add this to our bylaws in the city, with the city. I thought it was well-written, certainly. And I think it's just something that we have to do and get the community to understand what we're trying to do here.
And one thing that I had said is there's a lot of things that go on sitting in this spot that I never once thought we'd even ever have to talk about, and this would certainly be one of them. I never for a moment thought that talking about where and when and how you can put up antennas within the city limits would be a conversation, but as in those workshops that we had, and we talked about it more, it makes sense why these things need to be discussed and ordinances need to be put in place so that yeah, we're just don't have towers everywhere with cords running every which direction with ice hazards and everything else coming off them. So this would be one of those things I would definitely state that I never thought for a moment we would discuss. But now that it's on the table, I think it is something that we definitely need to move forward with and take care of our community. Anybody else have any thoughts, discussions? All right, remember this is the introduction and the first reading of this ordinance. So we'll have further opportunity to discuss if something comes up where somebody in the community finds you and has a question. All in favor of moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up is the considering of approving the title and summary of the proposed ordinance regulating antennas and towers be published in the city officials newspaper. Motion to move?
So move.
I'll respect it.
Coivin and Rosey. Any discussion on this publishing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the pay application number two from Peterson Sheet Metal in the amount of $134,536.53 for the multipurpose building Boiler Reconstruction Project, call it the old school project, call it the community center project, but this old school building's heat. Motion to move?
So move.
Move by Purpich.
Support.
Support by Coivin. Any discussion on this at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Just when you think you're done spending a little bit of money. Pay application number three from Peterson Sheet Metal Inc. in the amount of for the multipurpose building Boiler Reconstruction Project. Motion to move?
So move.
Rosey? Second?
Support.
Purpich? Any discussion on this bill? All right, all in favor to pay the bill? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the pay application number 13, final from Max Great Construction in the amount of $131,279.32 for City of Evlith projects that they completed for us. Motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich? Second?
Support.
Coivin? Any discussion? In discussion with Jackie earlier, there is some of these projects that have a little bit of a hiccup or a flaw that we need them to come in and fix. So it is recommended that we hold off on 5,000 of this total number until those projects are completely finished without hiccups and problems, so that we see them return and get the projects done.
I think that's a good idea, because it's like a retainage, isn't it, Al? Usually 10% or something, but.
So this is a release of the retainage, or the whole back 5,000. It's about the controls and the temperature setting.
Punchless stuff.
Yeah.
I would think that they'll come in and take care of it. I mean, they did so much work already.
I like that idea.
$5,000 worth of punchless stuff.
I noticed we got the caps on the on the wall, where the lights were.
Mr. Herbert, that's all.
He was sick of us hollering all the time.
My first two meetings here, I thought, where do we live?
Yeah.
But Joe never asked me to lick my fingers and grab one, so I didn't worry about it too much.
We haven't had that bad of a meeting yet.
I'd vote on this as long as we retain the $5,000, so I'd hold back the 5,000.
Okay, any further discussion? So all in favor of paying this amount minus the hold amount of $5,000 till all projects are complete? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, write the check minus 5,000. Next up, miscellaneous lease between Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the city of Evlith. This is for the property west of Highway 53 for the possible business park development. Motion to move?
West of Highway 53.
So moved.
By Rosey?
Support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Discussion is open. So from brief conversation for better understanding, I maybe like you guys maybe not at all, was kind of taken back when I read that there was gonna be a lease agreement for property, I thought, wow, we're taking over property, we're gonna use. Not so much the case, as much so as we are going to be given the rights to utilize it for testing to see if it is what we are expecting it to be, or hoping it to be, or hoping what we don't want it to be, et cetera. Jackie, do you have anything you wanna extend on that at all?
No, just that this is 80 acres on the east side of the future progress parkway. And remember, we have, the city has a lot of land in that area, we're calling it Jack High Business Park. That name might change just a holding place. And so the goal is for us to be able to go in there and do a wetland delineation and see where the exposed bedrock is, to determine whether that site is developable to go with our property in the whole redevelopment. And this is being funded by that grant from the actual party that we got to do all of these donations.
Remember us talking about this.
Any discussion, any questions for Jackie?
West of Highway 53, Jackie?
Oh, sorry, my north south barometer was off. East of Highway 53, east, I think, to the new progress parkway.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
You had a flabbergasted.
On the map, I saw east, but I didn't think about it.
Okay, no, I'm, no, I'm because I looked at the map and I says, well, what, this is Highway 53 here, and I'm like okay, thanks, Jack. I thought there was something by the holiday end that we, or leasing or something. Okay, thank you, Jack.
All depends if it's closure right or your left eye.
Yeah, I guess.
Any further discussion on that at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Number 11, request for one EMT to a town in the wilderness EMS event on August 19th through the 22nd in the great town neighboring us not far off, Ely.
So move.
Move by Purpich. Second? Coivin? Any discussion at all?
Well, I hope the person that, if we decide to send somebody is a camper.
And bring bug dough.
Holy cow.
Bring bug dough.
The moment I saw bring flashlight with extra batteries, I thought somebody is not begging, they're being.
No power or wifi will be available.
Hiking boots got me, dill.
As much as you know, I can't see not sending somebody because if we have someone in our area and there's woods, and we need to get to them, and I think knowing how, and if we can send someone and he can bring back some information for the rest of the guys who have their meetings and stuff, I don't, I can't see not participating in this.
I'll be abstaining from this.
Don't go in, John, are you going?
That also. No wifi, come on. No, these aren't kids going, so you know what I mean? They're not going for wifi or anything, they're going nowhere. But I probably already said too much, I'll be abstaining.
We have a.
We have a safe side for anything further as far as that's concerned.
I think you should go and just tell lots of stories about West Evlith.
I'll be support, they can radio me in.
No radio, John.
Anyway, I'll be abstaining.
No, I think this is a great thing, and I agree with you there, Mr. Purpich, on this one then. With all the things that are going on, if they take home one small thing that can save a life, that's huge. Any other further discussion on it at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Last up will be the twelfth one that we just added on the agenda addition. And this is from Waterview Woods. They're looking to have a car show on August 13th from 1 to 4, and they utilize our main street for that show, for the people of Waterview Woods. So motion to move?
I would motion to move as long as it's all right with the chief and the city. I'll second that.
Yeah.
You know, they've done it before.
It's every year that time, man, you've been doing this for a decade.
We only block off that block, which I thought.
Ain't nothing special or new, same old same.
Signs and, you know.
Motion by Coivin and second by Purpich, if you didn't catch that. Yeah, I guess if you're happy with it, chief, I'm definitely happy with it, and I will spend some time down there as well.
It's something that we've done in the past, so.
Yeah.
It gives them something to look forward to, to get over. Yeah, it's a good thing.
Their excitement for the parade was fun, so it'll just be added excitement for this.
It's a good thing they're not on a big hill.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up, boarding liaison updates. This got cut a little bit short. The last meeting, as people were hustling to get away from tornadoes and everything else, so we can catch up a little bit. Starting on the end with you, Joe.
We had a rock board meeting, and that's running as usual. No big expenses, just got a lot of stuff coming up. You know, just a lot of world curling and stuff gonna be coming in the future. We have a golf course commission meeting on Thursday, as of now, which big accounts of lots. And we also have an airport commission meeting coming up Thursday. But otherwise that, I got nothing.
Mr. Purpich, anything you've got going on?
Yeah, we had a park commission meeting last week, and we'd like to take a minute to talk about what was discussed. We, of course, we've had we've got the playgrounds that we took apart down by the IGA, behind the IGA there, and we have those in storage for right now, and we're gonna find a place to move them. But there's probably gonna have to be another inventory taken, some replacement of some of the slides and swings and stuff to make them, and going forward. There will be, hopefully there will be in September a craft fair at the Veterans Park, I guess they call it, which is gonna be, it's put on by the people that are the caretakers out there, and we've been doing that for a while. Discussion did come up about the Ely Lake Campground. Is it the Veterans Park Campground? Is it the, you know, is it the City of Evlith Campground? In order for us to I don't, if we're gonna have a website, our campground should be in that website, I would think, at some point.
Have a name.
You know, and have a name for it. I mean, I, there was a, I didn't bring it with me, but there was a article about this numerous years ago. Why was it named Veterans Park when at first it was Evlith City Park? So I guess it's up to us to decide what we're gonna call it, then once we eventually call it whatever it's gonna be. So we have to we have to make a decision about how we wanna present our park. It's full, it's doing well. We've had some issues out there, chief, I guess, huh? Had some arrests out there, young people.
Several.
Similar to what, you know, defacing. They turned the hot water on in the showers and left it run all night. We've had some deep things that were graffiti, we'd had some thefts out there, so we wanna make sure that we're getting our patrols out there as much as much as we can.
Catch these kids, we should throw the book at them, make an example of them, because enough is enough.
I can't see them getting out of jail free cards. This is not, someone has to, you know, take responsibility for these kids out there, so. One thing we should look at too is, you know, if we're gonna have this craft fair, maybe get the vendors, get some vendor trucks out there. Let those vendor people that apply for licenses here go out there, make sure they're aware that there is something going on out there. That would be nice. So there was, yeah, there was some real good discussion. They've been making the rounds of the parks, checking out which pieces of equipment need to be replaced and everything, so it's good, and we're going forward, so it was a really, really good meeting. And like Joe says, we have an airport meeting, I believe it's Thursday at 3:30. We're still looking for an airport manager, as far as I know, so. Anybody in the audience that wants to find out what an airport manager is, let us know, we'll let you know. That's all I have right now.
From the park point, I had a lot of people over the holiday weekend come in, show excitement for different things, whether it was just seeing what looked like to be really nice green grass up at the old school site, to what are you doing with those old tennis courts? You know, kinda anger at first, and you realize that we're gonna do some. You know, kind of anger at first, and you realize that we're going to do something there, and it was excitement. And then you tell them pickleball courts and stuff, excitement.
Was.
Um, so it was, it was good to hear that, whether it was the people that are in the community today or people that returned for the weekend, there was a lot of excitement for the things that we've been talking about and moving forward on, so that was good. And then maybe when I turned my back, they had a different opinion on me at that point, but that's fine. But overall, I think that people were truly excited about the things that we've been talking about, wanting to do, and, and seeing them go in a good direction. So, um, kudos to that park commission for, the park board, for what they've been doing and moving forward and getting some answers, and I think that at our next workshop, would you please put on it that we discuss the name of that park, so there is finally, uh, some, a conclusion to the mystery and/or a decision made? I appreciate that.
I think there may have been, when the land was actually donated to the City of Evlith, there was... At, at one point, probably forty years ago, I actually may have written the document, but, uh, there was something said about the use of that particular land, and I think there might be a title associated with it, the Veterans Park on Ely Lake, uh, from back in the days when it was...
I think you're right, because we were here.
Then again, you know, if, if that was the case, and I'm not, I'm not disputing the, the argument about, uh, uh, being, have, be designated the Veterans Park, but as far as I know, there's been no veteran committee or anything that has come to the city, asked us for anything. Um, the city has always done the repairs and the work and, and everything on it. I, uh... I can't, unless there's something in there that I'm missing, um...
Maybe as easy as looking back at the titling.
And it, and it may be, but, you know, I've... I've known a lot of older veterans in this community in my forty-plus years of living here that they had no recollection of, of it, so I, I, I don't know, so I... All I know, all I know is that, that people are wondering, you know, where it is and what it is.
I think we could just look up to how it became the Veterans Park. I mean, it was gifted to the City of Evlith, I heard that too. No, was it from a veteran and he called it that? I'm not positive, we'd have to look at the paperwork.
Well, let's, let's...
I do think that some paperwork, I have a vague record.
Yeah, we, we did.
And, and that place didn't open up in nineteen fifty-five either. It's been around for quite a while, has it not?
I must think of like...
You're just looking on Google. He's checking on Google, that's what I was going to do, and I go...
He's on it, he's on it.
He's on it. He'll have answers when I come around. Mr. Lillis?
Well, prior to the last meeting, when I sprinted out of here and almost got swept away in the torrent going from the city all here. Uh, yeah, we, we had both H R A and E D A meetings, and I'm hoping that Counselor Rosie will report on H R A and I'll report on E D A. Uh, E D A, we had, uh, some discussions regarding improving different things that we have in the interest or control over, um, including the, uh, the new park, Pocket Park on Grant Avenue. Um, looking forward to making some additional improvements to that in the near future at little to no expense to the city, and, um, as well as the Leona de Sover. So the Leona de Sover, look, the, um, hope is to get some, um, equipment up there that's going to enhance the visitors' ability to view the mine companies from that outlook. And, uh, you know, the only thing, I think, more than one of us expressed, a little bit of hesitancy because of the vandalism that has occurred up there this year. Very disheartening that, you know, we, we just completed the project up there to, to enhance the property, and then within a brief period of, uh, time from when it opened, we had some vandalism going on. Had some graffiti, spray painting, and we had, in that area or near that area, we had an arson fire that was, but be that as it may, we look forward to continuing our discussions and, uh, hopefully, within a reasonably short period of time, we'll be able to bring that to fruition and, and enhance that property even further. So with that, I'll move on to...
I was up in Babbitt this weekend, and, you know, they've got a three-foot fence or four-foot fence surrounding a bunch of old equipment, and it's amazing, there's all vandalism and all. There's the simple thing that says, "Do not climb." I saw people around it, and what he was climbing on, they're just taking pictures and smiling and enjoying, so... Yes, I believe majority of the people are going to use it for exactly what you're speaking of. It's just narrowing down the small group that's unfortunately doing what they're doing, and we've had, I have, and we have had conversations with chief on the things that we can do to up, uh, uphold the beauty that we're creating, and as Joe stated earlier, those that are doing the, the deed that they are being held accountable and not just giving shake, a shaking finger. So hopefully that will set the tone a little bit more moving forward, but, uh, obviously catching them and moving, moving in that direction is number one. So chief is on it, he's got his mind on it, and we'll get some answers here, maybe at a workshop or whatever, what is expected, what's needed, what that'll cost, so...
Sounds like a winner. It's up to you, chief, to bring them people justice.
I do.
And I know it's, you're the man to do it, too. That's why we can't have nothing nice. Anyway, we had H R A. Everything is going just wonderfully as can be. There was some discussion on future proj- projects as far as painting outside maintenance. We have installed new playground equipment up there, and it doesn't, it's not in a huge area, but it's in a well enough, and it looks very nice, and is well utilized already by the individuals up there. We also received, like the city did with this big check that's sitting down there. It's not quite as big, but we did receive ten thousand dollars from the bank and their affiliate grant, on the same money that the city received. We got, we got two hundred thousand for the city, so it was the same thing that's going on. But other than that, things are, doors have all worked out, no problems, blah, blah, blah. Just got to get some paint and stuff done, we'll be doing great. And that's about it.
Perfect. Um... Few more meetings Mr. Purpich and I had while, since the last meeting, was some people regarding what we want to do up on the school project and some advancements there, and I've been working with the I triple R B on a few other items that will come to light at our next workshop as well. Um, so I'm excited to get those things moving. Uh, there's a V E D A meeting here on Thursday at eight A M. And, uh, the Rams group is going to have all of the mayors get together and talk about what we, what we know and what we don't know, and you get answers and learn from it, and go from there, so... Busy schedules as always, and, uh, I look forward to what the month of July and August are going to bring for the council members here, but also more importantly for this community, because I think there's a lot going to happen in the next month and a half, two months. Uh, with that, chief, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank our officers for, uh, their great work over the street dance we had on the Fourth of July. They put in some long hours. It's almost been like eighteen-hour shifts, I worked twenty-one hours straight the other day. Um, our E M Ts, we paged out several times in the street dance, is very, very busy. Um, the fire department for helping put up barricades on the day of the parade. I think it's the second year you guys have helped us now, so that's a huge help for us, not having to worry about setting up barricades and taking them down on the parade day, so... Yeah. So I got...
Perfect. Mark, anything that you were relaying to say or something, you just want to say freelance?
No, I was just kind of on the same boat with him. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for cleaning the streets coming in. They did a very good job again, getting all the, the moors that we had out, uh, the weed whackers, the students, getting everything ready before the Fourth, and, um, everybody stepped up to the plate again, and they did a wonderful job.
Unbelievable how you guys took care of the, after the street dance and the night that was going on. They did a really great job, as always.
When you can come in the next day and it doesn't smell like a brewery and factory, because there was some mornings I went to open up the barn, it was not a nice smell. These guys do a fantastic job, they're starting at four o'clock in the morning, um, and they clean and clean, and it just can't say enough about everybody.
Speaking from a person who did that for over a decade at least, it's a, it's a, it, it's an interesting job because of the chaff that the human race leaves behind as we clean it up. But it is a big project, and the difference between that night and when they're done is amazing. Like, it just didn't happen, you know?
You look down the main street, drove down there today and even yesterday. It's hard to realize that there was ten thousand people in this town.
And everybody throwing their...
You know, everybody throwing and doing whatever they do on the street, and it's just such a miraculous job everybody does, and you can't thank them enough.
Yeah, but it's, it's very... You didn't lose any, uh, biddies or anything this year?
No, I don't think it anywhere.
Anyway, yeah, that's a big job, that's tough. Good job.
Alan?
So, uh, construction's progressing on Highway fifty-three. They're going to begin the city utility, the bulk of the city utility work toward the end of this month. Um, so all that stuff will happen, there'll be a little more, uh, things related to that that the city will see. And that's about it.
Not so fast.
No. You got any updates on the indigenous fossil site or...
I do not.
You do not?
So there's a meeting that's, uh, being set up to discuss the roundabout, uh, second roundabout, new location and stuff like that, um. I don't know that it's probably a date yet, but they were...
Excellent.
Jackie, anything on your mind? Nothing you're going to say anyway, other than a turd.
Other than a few months a week.
Joel?
Thanks, mayor. I, I did check the title for the park, there's nothing in the title of that, so it may be in some other formation documents and things for the, uh, formation of the campground itself or the park itself, uh, not that's available through the, the registrar's office, um, but I don't have anything else than that. Good evening.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I did my best on, uh, the third of July and on the Fourth of July to everybody working for the city, whether they're wearing blue or wearing coveralls or whatever it may be, to try to thank them and shake their hands and, uh, give candy, if I could give them candy or a magnet, I guess, if they want to bring a magnet home too, but I did my best to catch up everybody, and if I miss anybody, I apologize, but we do seriously thank you for everything that everybody did, uh, whether it was on the third, the fourth, or prior to that. The city looked absolutely amazing. The Fourth of July committee came through huge, yet again, put on a great event for us to, uh, show support for amazing country through, my opinion, the greatest city. So I, I thank everybody for their hard work, and, you know, it makes the, the five of us up here look really, really good when everybody else is doing amazing work every single day, so thank you for that. And then I want to thank the city also for their patience. The community has been great so far with this road construction. Um, we got through the hiccups of needing the driver-owned barricades and going through the A T V trails and stuff like that, we're just accepting the fact that it's not fun, but hopefully in about two months, we'll be able to get back to somewhat of normalcy, that, that's a good feeling, and, uh, I thank everybody for their, for their patience as we go through this, and I think the worst is behind us after sitting in Gilbert waiting to get to Evlith. I know the way the worst is behind us for sure, so, um, thank you to everybody though for being patient, working through this, and we know that it's a real pain, and we know that you want us to open up the road by the cemetery to come directly into town. I pushed for it, I yelled and screamed, and, um, the points to why we're not doing it away, um, the reasonings to opening it up, and unfortunately, it's just the way that it'll be. Min dot is unwilling, and, um, after hearing their reasons and then watching it myself, I understand better why we're keeping it closed, so, um, you, you're welcome to call or email me about it more if you'd like, but that is just the way it'll be, because unfortunately, we can't, and we won't be able to change it, so... But thank you to everybody, and, uh, thank you again to everybody for the city that served what they did over the holidays. If, uh, nobody else has anything further, we will call this meeting adjourned, thank you.
After the parade in Gilbert, did you walk on top of cars in Evlith?